Open the meeting for comments to the public this time. Anybody wishing to address the board may do so. Okay, I'll close the comments for the public. You'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, a regular meeting of July 7th. If you all have coffee for it, is there any addition or deletions? I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written on the July 17th. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Bertsch. Any discussion? There being no discussion, a favor vote by you to sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills. You all have a copy of the bills. Becky, is there any additions or deletions?
No.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, a favor vote by you to sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
I only have one letter tonight. Dear Mayor, Village Board, and our San, I am writing this letter to inform you of my resignation as of August 1st of '08. This represents a resignation as a count clerk typist, deputy clerk, and deputy registrar. I would like to thank you all for everything you have done for me in the past four years. It was greatly appreciated. It is just time for me to move on and start a new journey. Sincerely, Carrie Jeanette.
In the motion app, I'll make a motion to accept her resignation. With regrets, please. Keep regret.
I'll go use to say that.
Moved by trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Bertsch. Any discussion? There being no discussion, a favor vote by you to sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, a report of the mayor and the board trustees. First thing on the agenda tonight is the 78th Annual NEUA Conference, MEUA Conference in Lake Placid, September 23rd, 24th, 25th, and 26th. And I would like to attend, of course. Anybody else? I would like Mr. Palkey to attend.
Check our schedule.
I know.
Pretty busy and it's about time our transformers we come.
We can put in for two and see what happens. Or more, if anybody else wants to go. Four days?
I can't go, too much going on.
At least it's closed this year.
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth of September.
September.
At least it's closed this year.
Yeah.
You can go, do you have to go all three or four days?
No, you can go single days.
All right, I'll go.
Are you gonna go, John?
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion to allow the mayor and trustee Baker to attend the...
Brian.
Oh, Brian, oh, I thought you weren't gonna go. Okay, I'll make, uh, sorry, I'll amend my motion, rescind it, and I'd like to make a motion for three people to attend the Municipal Electric Utilities Association meeting on September 23rd, 24th, 25th, and 26th. So I'll put that forward in motion.
One second.
Motion is made by trustee Jefferson and seconded by trustee Bertsch. And, uh, why is it? I've got that marked.
That's not when you're starting the water tower, is it?
No. That's probably start for the first week. I don't know, Saturday or Wednesday. I know I'm going and I may come home Thursday night instead of Friday morning. I'll see, something, something scheduled, I don't know what the list is yet. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, a favor of the motion, vote by you to sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Make a request to waiver parking at the boat launch for sports and barbecue Sunday. I'll second that. I know that somebody will complain, but it's only one day here. Good for business. Any other discussion?
I have some questions. Are there any particular hours that we would want to list? My concern would be if it's, if a boater gets there very early in the morning, they could potentially be blocked in for a good part of the day. But it's supposed to be...
No, if you park right, they shouldn't be parked, uh, blocked in.
Well, in those long spaces, you're gonna put more than one car there.
But what I'm saying is they shouldn't be blocked in. We've done this every year and had a problem even last year. Starts at noon. Starts at noon.
By eight o'clock it's done.
Yeah.
Okay. If anybody gets blocked in, we'll just have them...
Send them to me.
Hopefully, Cyrus.
Not bad either. Get them happy.
I think I'm gonna go and block someone in just to prove a point.
And you would.
Yes, I would.
Well, then that would have your car towed.
No, you won't.
And you'd have to pay for it.
No, you won't.
If you park within the white lines, you'll have to pull it out.
I can be within the white lines and still be blocking someone in.
Is it the water or something? Is there something on the water?
I don't know. Any other discussion? A favor vote by you to sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. On the agenda is a discussion of noise ordinance. This was brought before me last week. I contacted their attorney. In fact, I had to go down there Friday to the attorney's office and sign the, whatever it is, pick work for the... Right away or the easement that we got for a family dollar. But that's finally in the final stages. So, talked to Tom about it. He said he thought he had a sample. You'll all have a sample. And I'm sure we're not going to be able to do anything with this tonight, but it's there for discussion. I don't think you've had time to read it. It just came in this morning. It's there so that you have a chance to take a look at it.
Is there any particular area in the village of George that there's been a lot of noise?
Anchorage Hotel is one of them.
Where?
The Anchorage Hotel.
Yeah, you got the construction workers in the school. They're, you know, they go there and have their room, have two beers, cocktail, or whatever.
They have, uh, they have a couple of nights in a row there. They've had tables outside, barbecuing and drinking beer. The neighbors are complaining about the language and the loud music. And I don't think that's right. We've never had that there before.
Just because the bar's not open.
Well, it could be even the bar's not open, but what I'm saying is it's not right. I mean, if you were living there and...
Years ago, they used to have like, remember when I was younger? There was a lot of guys that used to have like garage bands. You know, they'd get in there, open up the garage door, and they'd play music. They'd better themselves. Is that something that would be outlawed under this noise?
Uh, it could be if it's over, I mean, we had, John, what you gotta do is read this whole thing. Because it gets, you know, it gives, uh, and this is only a sample for us. It's what's in place and flat for.
A month from now, we will have this problem exactly.
Not...
If you wanted to enforce it by a certain hour, you could.
Problem being, and let's put it this way, the reason why this came about is that Tommy went up there three times, uh, night before last. Oh, yeah?
Thursday.
Friday night, Thursday night.
Thursday.
Three different times. And he has nothing in place that he can enforce. Take a look at it, board, there's...
Well, we, you know, we think about, I just think about different areas that, like the Marina's, Sportsman's Pier, they have parties there at night. They have horseshoes, they have music playing.
Well, you can, like I said, John, look at it. We'll have to, we'll have to fine tune this to, you know, whatever. I mean, look at the Fourth of July. I mean, I hear the band's up to my house. They're playing down here. I don't complain. I don't think anybody else does, but it's something we'll have to look at. It says go. Okay. Next thing on my agenda is our MEUA resolution. And that resolution is to appoint the voting delegate, which will be me. This is why as the board of trustees, the Villager Rosas points a member in the Municipal Electric Utilities Association of New York State, and whereas the annual conference on the Municipal Electric Utilities Association will be held at, on September 23rd, 24th, 25th, 26th, 2008, to be held at the Crown Plaza, Lake Placid Resort, Lake Placid, New York. Whereas in accordance to the bylaws of the Municipal Electric Utilities Association of the State of New York, each municipal member may cast one vote on each transition, transition properly brought before the meeting. Therefore, be resolved that Georgia Rivers is hereby designated as the accredited delegate for the Villager Rosas point. This resolution should take effect immediately on the question. And I put that in form of a motion. Move by myself and seconded by trustee Penfield. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, roll call vote. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Bertsch.
Aye.
Trustee Baker. And the mayor votes, how come all these things are not in the order they should be?
If they are, I mean...
They are not, trust...
Yeah, they are.
Yes, they are.
They are, I mean.
Oh, shoot, I read, sorry. I forgot about Jefferson.
How did you forget me?
Well, it's pretty hard.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Outside, I don't want.
Yeah, must be.
Okay, next thing on my agenda, rules and regulations for Montgomery Street Pier. And that is, uh, we've got several requests for, to have weddings down there. And I have no judgments of any weddings, but I think we need to have guidelines for people down there, like we don't want them to nail things to the pier. We don't want them to hang ribbons, stuff like that. So we need to come together, we'll set a guideline. I don't mean be so restrictive that you don't want anybody, but I think we need to protect ourselves too.
And they would get these when they called in?
When they call in, they would be sent that to them.
Can they tie ribbons around the railing?
Might not.
Just tie?
Yes.
That gives people some...
Yeah, it does, you know, it doesn't hurt anything.
Throw rice or paper?
I couldn't care less whether they throw in the bride.
Well, paper has a die in it.
Yeah, how about rice or popcorn, so it's far any greater. You've never heard that little video about the Jewish wedding?
Nope.
At the wedding, at the wedding. Everybody was throwing boots and shoes at the bride, and some damn fool left us inside at the wedding. Do it, Mary.
Oh, boy, it's a great...
Oh, boy. Got you all shook, there you go, you're out. Okay.
Do you wanna repeat that?
No, I'd like...
No, I don't think so either.
Okay, so, uh, board, please think about, it is hot in here. Please think about, you know, what you'd like to see in federal's. And within, we got another wedding scheduled for the 13th of September.
The picture in our picture was very nice.
Yes, it was.
Down there, it was nice, yeah. Yeah.
Brian, if you get married, then you can maybe get married down here.
Brian's gonna have a secret wedding.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Hot camp.
Hot camp, yeah. I can't perform a wedding up there, I have to be in the village.
Oh, yes, you can.
Now you can. All right. Crosswalk signs on Montgomery Street. Crosswalks, crosswalks on Montgomery Street. John, I think you've got something on here about...
Discussion on traffic.
Traffic control, driving. Why don't we just, I'll hold off and do it all at once.
Okay.
Okay, that's it for me, trustee Jefferson.
I just have one thing, I just wanna say that the boat inspection facility is working so good, they're gonna keep it going all summer. So we're gonna keep it running right through the end of the year. The only other thing I wanted to mention is three or four people have fallen here, coming to the court. Now, can we maybe order something like, you know, how you go into a bank where you, the people can't see the contrast, I guess, from, like, they come up to pay a fine and they, uh, one of the deputies fell, a couple of ladies fell.
Where are they falling, here or here?
Well, I believe right...
Right there.
I believe right here.
Well, this is one of the suggestions, is to just put a post there or over there.
Right there. Or what about those things in a bank? You know, how you could put like a pole and a pole and there's a rope there?
Yeah, something...
Something that you can move.
You can move it, and then we can move it, you know, because, you know, 'cause like four people have fallen, then, you know, so we don't wanna get sued. So, you know, we got a problem, so.
Hey, it's in the court, I can sue the judge.
This was, I always thought, a very odd configuration.
Yeah, it is kinda odd.
Yeah.
But if we lowered this, it would be weird, because we'd be down lower than everybody else.
The shape of it, I always thought is odd.
You know what I'm thinking about, how this got shaped? Yeah, it's weird, but...
'Cause people have fallen here as well. They've come to pass things to us during a meeting, and they've fallen on these corner pieces also.
Well, let's have it moved back, so same configuration as the desk.
You mean cut that back?
Yeah.
I suppose you could.
That's the easiest solution.
Well, you have electric under it?
Oh, there are heaters under there.
Oh, there is?
Just ductwork. Just ductwork.
If the bigger problem is there, that would probably be the place.
Well, then, things like you're talking about might be the answer. I don't know how much of this they use during court.
You only go over where John said.
Well, don't they have the two tables set up here? They don't come in here?
They don't come in.
Okay, then why don't we put that thing right across there?
You could also coordinate, get a, the same idea, but put a pole on that and bring it in and pole out there so people...
Or you can get those things too, like you hook up to the wall and you run it across, you know, and then you can just disconnect it, so that way...
Like they have, like they have at the airport.
Right. You know, just so people can see it. Nobody... Electric fence?
Somebody put a pole in there, that's...
No, I think the silver poles with the little curtain in between would be good. Because then people would stop if they approached, you know?
George could come out of the curtain and tell us jokes.
Okay.
So are we just gonna go ahead and come up with something that's...
Yeah, we'll find something, we're looking at books that...
Like staples or something?
Staples are those books, furniture books that have stuff like that.
We'll take that right out of the, uh...
I have one as a matter of fact, right here.
You?
Yes.
Yeah, there they are, right there.
Hold on.
How much you go? How much is it?
How much have you got for court budget?
Yeah, maybe we just take rid of the court budget, there you go. Yeah, there you go.
There's a nice one right there.
Folks, they're 200. The ribbon is about 105. If you're probably looking at, you know, 350, you shouldn't be bothering.
There you go.
Some of them are a little cheaper, but I brought this for the garbage can.
Garbage can discussion.
What about a plant in front of each one?
Whatever you want, girl.
A what?
Put one of those plants, those artificial plants or something in front of each one.
So that would be a good idea on here, on those corners.
And nobody's gonna walk into it.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Or fresh flowers or something.
Here, one of these, caution.
There you go.
Or a traffic cone, that would suffice, right? We got a lot of those laying around.
That's all I have tonight, so.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson, trustee Penfield.
Okay. First item I have is to request an executive session to discuss office personnel.
Okay, I'll second that. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson, aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Bertsch.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Okay, and then I'm gonna skip and request another executive session to discuss public work department personnel.
And could you add that in the same... Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Bertsch. Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson, aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Uh, trustee Bertsch, all right, trustee Baker, aye. And I vote aye.
Okay. The next item I have is actually an item that was left over from the last meeting. There was a request made tonight that we voted to renew our insurance with the LeVar agency regarding the amount that we would save if we increased our deductibles. And then Andre also got back to us with some information about both flood coverage and earthquake coverage, which she says both are highly recommended, especially with some of the property that we are covering in the village. And I guess I'll bring it up again tonight for discussion in terms of where we wanna go with this. I think we have options. We can leave things the way they are when we voted to renew. We can discuss the possibility of changing our deductibles. We can discuss flood coverage and earthquakes coverage separately. And she's given us a series of quotes depending upon which way we decide to go. So... Brian, did you get the figures that she gave? It was in an email, but it was dated June 26th, I think, so it's been a while.
Yeah, can you give them to me again, Kellyanne?
Yeah, she says that increasing the deductible alone before quoting flood and earthquake would save approximately $1,583.
Okay.
Okay. The premium for the flood coverage is $2,296. The premium for the earthquake coverage is $837. So, those are the figures she had given us. The, um, for both the flood and earthquake coverage, the limit is 1 million and the deductibles for both are 50,000. And...
I just never heard any earthquakes up here at all. Is there?
We did have the one in...
There has been one north in St. Paul once, maybe about, what, 678.
2003, I think it is, we had one.
Oh, yeah? What about floods?
I don't know.
Well, the floods, it would also include periods like on Friday with excessive rain, even if, because that was always, we went through this before with our discussion and, you know, if we end up with damage due to even excessive rain, we would be covered for that, whereas now we're not.
If you remember what, I'll say, uh, several years ago, we had a rainstorm that didn't quit, and we had flooded basements, flooded streets, flooded everything.
So...
Would the, with the, uh, raising the deductible and the cost of the insurance, what's the difference? The premium, so we'd save, or...
If we raised the deductible to 2,500, it would save approximately $1,583, so save $1,600.
So, and if we decided to pay the full insurance and the earthquake insurance?
Flood coverage is 2,296, earthquake is 837.
$2,000, you're saving half.
We'd save a little bit. I don't know if we need flood, earthquake insurance though. I don't know.
Well, we can, you know, we can, if you wanna look, I can make you copy these emails if you wanna think about it for another, till the next meeting. I don't, I mean, we can pick up the coverage, I think, at any time.
And the flood and earthquake, we got a $1,000 minimum?
Yes, for $1,000 if it's covered.
And of course, that would probably take, let's say if we had another, uh, well, flood, let's say we had some, something happen in the winter and we got these torrential rains, like we almost had the ice storm, I wonder how that would be covered.
$50,000, it's a lot of damage, but I guess, I suppose it goes pretty quick, so.
Yeah, I don't...
What's the chances of our transformers or some of our infrastructure, Brian, being damaged by heavy rains?
I don't, I don't know that answer yet.
It's not something that you'd think that would probably occur. I mean, you're up on some F-8, right?
For the substation?
Yeah.
Yeah, the substation, the footers are all tied together and it'd have to be a pretty good earthquake to rock that place. I mean, I was thinking more of like the water tank, you know, high structures that even might have damage to.
Well, you think about the water tank, that would be pretty easy.
$50,000 in damage. The village office, heavy rains, flooding.
Yeah, 'cause every time we do have, I have this substantial rain, we have a lot of work coming back.
There's something to keep in mind too, folks. If you get, if we get natural disasters, heavy rains, flood, earthquakes, excuse me, nine chances out of 10, a disaster is gonna be declared.
Yeah, FEMA.
FEMA's gonna come in, and if you do your homework right, you'll recoup every cent that you spend on it.
So are you suggesting that we don't really need an earthquake?
I don't know if Andrea knows that.
I'm sure she does.
Well, I mean, she's given us a price of what it's costing.
I'm just saying that when we had the ice storm, we had about $470,000 worth of damage in the village here. And we recouped every single penny, FEMA plus. We actually got, we actually made about seven grand on that, believe it or not. And when I say that, don't say that, that we tried, we cheated the government, 'cause we didn't. We had paid so much money to have the paperwork done, and by the standards, they were allowed like X number percent. So they put the X number percent into the price, and that's what we got for paperwork. But that's, that's something to think about. Maybe it's a discussion to have with Andrea. Then again, if you have a localized rainstorm, you're not gonna get FEMA coverage.
Well, like we had a lot of...
You're damned if you do, damned if you don't.
I think for the, maybe the $1,500 that's gonna cost us a year, 'cause we're saving, if we go up to 2,500, maybe it's a real insurance policy to have. Because if we have like the, we didn't get it with Jay-Z.
Yeah, look what Jay-Z got us.
Everybody got trees knocked down all over last Friday. We could've been in that storm, we were lucky with that, we didn't.
It rained hard in Champlain. It rained hard here too. I thought if we raised the deductible up and then get the other covered, so we're only gonna spend like, I could've just said...
Yeah, 1,800, not wait, 'cause it would be 15 and...
What are you shooting that now for?
'Cause I don't think they should raise the deductible. That's only one time, let you have one accident, your deductible, your $1,500 is done. So if you have two, guess what? You're gonna go into the hole. If you look at a thousand for a $1,500 difference, you know...
All it does is put some of the rest back on that side. I mean, a thousand, $1,500 is not gonna break the bill, so I just, I'm just trying to, you know, I mean, I just put it out to consider that just, you know, it'll come back a little bit, I don't know.
So leave the deductible at a thousand?
I don't know, I mean, that's up to you people, but...
On an accident?
Yeah, with $50,000, I don't, I just, for me, a $50,000 deductible, you might be paying 20, 25,000 a lot of times, and not getting off the board. Or 10,000, whatever, I figured maybe.
Probably in a given year, I would imagine.
Oh, the deductible on, the, uh, the deductible's 50,000 on flood and earthquake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not on the other, the other, the other deductible is, is a thousand dollars, right? And they wanna raise it to 2,500.
Well, it's suggesting we may have righted it.
No. Hands on everything else.
But it's almost a dollar-for-dollar swap, you know? You're paying the 1,500 your way. If we have, you know, one or two occurrences during the year, which we seem to have had the last few years, it's almost a dollar-for-dollar swap. I, I guess I would be in favor of leaving it the way it is. In terms of the flood and the earthquake insurance? I don't know. The only thing you could ask her to do would be to do a quote bumper with a lower deductible on those policies.
I just don't wanna see, you know, after three incidents where, gosh, you're 15, 20,000 bucks a pop.
Yeah.
And they don't, and the insurance company, they don't get a, don't pay nothing, and we're doing the payment all the time.
Can we wait one more meeting?
Yeah, I'm sure you can. And we can ask our, what other deductible limits are there on the earthquake? And we can ask her, what other deductible limits are there on the earthquake and flood and see what the difference in the premium is? And, you know, yeah, we can wait, but not a problem at all. I told, I talked to her after the last meeting, so she knew that, that we've been kind of a small group last time, she totally understood, so I don't think it's a problem. So, we'll wait?
Yeah, I don't want to wait, she'll come with us.
Okay. The next item I have is having to do, I guess, with member items to be purchased, and maybe, George, you can help me out with this as well. I got a copy of an email from Melissa that went to George regarding the remaining waterfront purchases that we need to make a decision on. Apparently, two benches were borrowed from the Main Street Supply, the Shoreline Walkway, so we will need to purchase those two benches to replace to go downtown. We still have the quote for the pier regulation sign, which we had approved in May, but apparently there's been some...
Do you have the coverage that's going on that sign?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Sure. I have the one that we voted on in, in May. Those were the prohibitions that we had voted on. And then we had decided that we have a small sign on the bottom that basically said, "Pier's open at six AM to ten PM." And that would be attached on the bottom, so...
And I had golf carts to this?
Well, that's the thing, I think now is the time to make a final determination of what we want on that sign, so it can be ordered.
I, no, I have some reservations with that, because the A R C people.
Yeah, yeah, they're going around the village.
Yeah, you know, they, I don't know if they go down there, but there are other people driving golf carts down there.
The one thing that's good, though, about the golf carts is they can make use, maybe of the walkway. Maybe they don't have to pull out on the pier.
They're going right down on the pier.
Right, but maybe they don't have to pull out on the pier. Maybe they can enjoy the lake from the walkway, if it's not appropriate for those vehicles.
Well, I'm just saying that, I have observed, I have observed that. Skateboards, bicycles, swimming and fishing. I don't know the fishing, because, again, I have, I have some concerns with fishing. I mean, when you take a look at the way the benches are down there, if they're fishing out at the end, they're not going to bother anybody.
No, exactly. I agree with John that much.
The benches are so far back, they're not even going to bother. Again, though, but if they come up the side, which, right now, the water isn't that deep, so I don't think they would fish there, but off the end, they do.
What about debris from fishing, like mine, parts of fish?
Yeah, oh, I agree, I, for that, but...
They may not be bothering anyone by casting if there's no one in the vicinity, but what about what's going to be left behind?
I don't think they should be fishing there, because for the personal safety issue, because the people, if they're casting, it could be hooking all the people.
That's a big issue, but what we had talked about when we, we had that vote in May was, there were two things. First of all, the major issue was the safety due to the casting, but then, secondly, the cleanup. You know, do we want to be continually dealing with that?
They've been fishing very long.
Kids have been fishing there.
Yeah, it's not a good place to fish, they're not made on fishing.
You have to do things, John, go look at the fish, they're on the end of there. I'm surprised.
Some that come down by the, did you see one of those fishermen, they were coming up on all the, all the dock areas, there were weed areas and different things, there's some bicep.
I walked out there and watched them swim right around the pier fish. I mean, I just think, that's the other thing, is the kids jumping, I think that's dangerous.
They're going over a rail and jump out. Kids are going to be killed.
Exactly.
Well, we have to protect ourselves. It ain't like jumping off the state dock, they're going up on the rail, jumping.
You should jump off the pole. Not in the state dock. But, ability and all that thing. Yeah, I think for protection wise, insurance wise, it's a good idea to throw in the...
Okay, I just wanted to see...
But while we're talking about it, what, what should we add or delete? Do we have skateboards? Do we want to put rollerblades? In-line skates? I mean, do we want to restrict those?
That might be, that might be a good idea, because the wheels on those, the biggest problem I have down there is not the concrete, it's what's at the end of that pier. That's, it's not wood.
Right.
And it's special composition, composite for the water and moisture, so that it lasts. And that mark's easy, when you do that, so you might want to put the rollerblades on there.
Well, the rollerbladers, they're very...
The wheels are very hard on them.
Yeah, but it's not a good place to rollerblade, because of the...
Difference.
...mobile surface. I don't think you're going to get a rollerblade.
You may get them on Montgomery Street, but now that it's paved, because that's a very smooth surface.
Well, that's a nice place to...
And you get people going around that loop, you know, I mean, I don't care, whatever we decide is fine, but I know that that had come up.
This is strictly for the pier?
Yes. Bicycles?
Bicycles, yes.
Swimming or diving or jumping?
Yeah.
Swimming or diving?
Swimming, diving or jumping off pier.
And what about fishing?
Ah, we, I had some concerns, but...
I mean, they, they can fish all up and down the shoreline if they really want to fish. It's off the sportsman's pier, no place to fish.
I like the fishing. They're all fish there anyway.
But I think that's just to limit our light building.
Well, this also gives, I think, Scott and Tommy and anyone else who's patrolling down there, the ability to go up to a kid and say, "You really aren't supposed to be fishing here," did you read the sign?
Have we had any problem with anybody there at night and stuff? I haven't really heard anything.
Well, the other night, my wife and I were down there and we picked out six beer cans that were jammed right into the rail, empty beer cans. And, that's what I said, we need to, we need to put some baskets down there. We may not like it, but...
It's better to put them there, at least to put them in there, you know? It's better than having them blow all over.
Hopefully, they got enough decency, you know?
Yeah.
Probably, yeah, I gotta put some cans by the parking area, too.
I don't know, we, we've got to discuss that, but, but the thing is, those items are paid for by the state here, and we need to get them on order.
Yeah, let's do it.
And I think there's, there's trash cans, bike racks, the two benches, there's the plaque that's going on there, the bronze plaque.
We didn't order the bike, the bike racks yet?
Not for the waterfront. We did for the downtown, but we didn't order any for the waterfront, or trash cans either, because we decided to wait on trash cans till next year, but now, we're going to order some anyway. So, let's, can we just go one thing at a time? Anything else you can think of that you want to prohibit on the pier?
Give us again, skateboards?
I have skateboards and in-line skates.
Yeah.
Bicycles, swimming or diving, fishing.
Diving or jumping?
Diving slash jumping.
Diving would cover both of them, that's the thing.
You can get some smart aleck, though, I'm not that...
I don't know.
Yeah, but that's all right, can't be swimming.
You won't be swimming.
They can't do anything. Said you have the beer, but then you can't really, you know, it's pretty restricted, pretty restricted.
You can't have, you can't have beer down there. There's an open container law in there.
No, you're talking about fishing.
On the pier, there's an open container law in this village.
Nobody's telling us how to drink beer.
At least everybody has to watch their mouth and open container.
No, no, they were talking about beer.
I don't think you were talking about beer.
No, we weren't talking about, we were talking about fishing.
Fishing.
Your hearing aid wasn't turned up, though.
Yeah, they...
I think, I don't, I think you said you would fish out there.
Carol?
I was going to say, if that's, there's maybe no alcohol, probably get rid of that.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's covered by the open container law on that.
Yeah, automatically in the village.
I mean, we could put it on the sign to, for extra emphasis, but...
Yeah, that wouldn't be a bad idea, too.
I mean, they're going to forget, the younger ones are going to realize that there's an open container.
They're only going to pay attention to that when someone stops them anyway, so... Okay.
Let's get that on order tomorrow.
Are we going to get it from same place, or is it...
Yeah, that's right, Cal. Location? In the spot, somewhere around where, like, in the vegetable garden there, or in the...
Yeah, that's better.
My people can decide on that.
Okay.
I need to get out and stand there and look at it, I can't say off the top of my head. Okay, now, this plaque is supposed to be covering all of the funding agencies?
Yeah.
That have provided us with grant money to do this?
Yeah.
Okay, now, I know that we need to order the plaque, where is this plaque going to go, George?
They're going to be a, like a granite stone, so set on it, somewhere on the pier.
Okay, so we need to, who do we order it from?
Our Sen.
Okay, all right.
Our Sen can get that.
All right, so this one's our Sen. Do we need to know any wording, or is that already been done?
Let me see what's on there. I think Melissa had something for that. Yeah, she had the governor's name and all the names, she had that done somewhere. Yeah. You're going to have two signs that are on the pump house, once that plaque is up, you can take them down, because they'll cover them.
Do we need to vote on ordering this plaque?
No, I think that's, that's covered, you know, under that state grant.
Okay. And I think you're estimating, they've actually budgeted two thousand dollars, that should be ample to get the plaque or anything. All right, now, the next thing would be bike racks and trash cans. And this also goes along with the trash can items for the downtown. For the bike racks for the downtown, we purchased a loop once, and then a multi-loop for the park. Do we want to do it the same style there, or do we want to do a stand-up stand bike rack?
It'd probably be better to keep it all the same, wouldn't it?
I think the loops are good, I think they're inobtrusive and, I don't know, to me, they are probably pretty functional.
And everything flows if you all get the same thing, you know, it's like...
Might as well make a match.
Make a match, was in the downtown?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the last, and how many bikes do you think we should?
I think there's four, four bikes, is it, in the racks?
We could do four, four, six, somewhere in the vicinity, four, five or six bikes?
Two, six.
Six.
Coffee shop and then I think with the Sari.
Are those going to come out, or are they staying all year round?
They come out all year.
You need to get the snow gear racks.
They're the loop, multi-loop ones. Like that? They, I think we ordered the others in black.
No, they're my go-bout.
They're those loop, the loops. You want to keep it the same?
Yeah.
Okay, to match the downtown?
Yeah, it's easy.
And then, the last thing then would be the trash cans, and I think we could also maybe match those to the downtown. And, I don't know what style, the only thing I know that in talking to everyone, we've talked about having a very small opening on the top, which is just about big enough to fit maybe a small sandwich container, or a coffee cup, or a bottle, a water bottle or something. The question is, do we want to do a steel style, or do we want to do something that's more decorative, more of a cement style, maybe like that?
Just want something that they can't tip over.
Well, some of these are quite heavy. For example, this one is six hundred and forty pounds. They're not going to be able to tip that one over, I don't think. So...
How much is that?
Well, we budgeted for the downtown, six thousand dollars for four garbage cans, so we can get, I think, some fairly substantial cans, fifteen hundred a piece, that, you know, with shipping. But, some of the ones that they have in this book, most of them, I guess, are steel. I guess it's what we really need to decide on, is what composition do we want to use? George, you had mentioned the...
Concrete ones.
Concrete ones.
Down on the pier, I would put concrete ones.
Yeah.
But I think you'd only need about two down there.
Right, yeah, two.
Two? And we would want to do maybe matching ones in the downtown?
Would you want to put one next to the handicap parking bench?
I, I don't know, I don't know where we...
Because you got two or three benches there.
Yeah.
Yeah, next to the handicap.
Probably should be one down there, and one up, one up on...
If not, I'd probably pick up the garbage over there.
It'd be better if they threw it in the garbage can. Hopefully, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, as long as we do it with the very, the narrow tops, so that it's really just for people who are walking along and have, you know, a small item to throw away.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
That's more enough.
So, concrete for the waterfront, and in terms of the downtown, concrete also, or the black, kind of steel to match the bike racks? If something like this...
How much are them, in weight, to say?
This particular one is three hundred pounds, thirty-two gallons.
Yeah.
Three hundred pounds.
Isn't it less likely to move them around downtown, right, people are around?
Tipped a table over Stewart's, and they couldn't believe it.
You're kidding.
Yeah, it was a pretty big table, too.
What time in the morning was this, they're open?
It's late. Well, I don't know, what day early in the morning, it was tipped over from the night, so, it was a pretty heavy cable.
Okay, so we'll go with concrete on the waterfront and maybe a decorative steel type in the downtown?
Sure.
Does that sound good?
Yep.
Okay, then we also have, a no parking sign in here, George, that's also in the email.
How do we want to put that? Oh, that was in front of the, okay, that's in front of the fire hydrants.
Dry hydrant?
The dry hydrants, somewhere at the parking sign there.
And they estimated if we get a decorative sign from Chilene Cal, it would be about four hundred dollars?
I guess so. I, I didn't, Melissa must have checked on that.
There's a sign in there.
I don't, I don't know. Probably not very big, I would imagine.
Just to be...
Keep it the same decor.
I think so.
He makes good signs, boy, that Chilene Cal. It's good.
So, can we, we have all agreed upon this, we get this order tomorrow, because some of the stuff, they need a motion.
They should, I should spend that kind of...
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of the two benches to replace the Main Street benches. We've already authorized the pier regulation sign, but I'll include in the motion the new wording that we have from tonight. The decorative plaque for the funding agencies. A bike rack for the waterfront, and two trash cans for the waterfront, and then no parking signs in the pier.
And trash cans for uptown?
We already approved those.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Fable, second of the trustee Jefferson, any discussion? Any final discussion, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The only thing that goes along with that, I was talking to Brian today, the guys are going to be getting ready to do the sidewalks on the east side of Lake Street, the decorative tile paper. And so, we need to give Brian a final placement for the benches and the bike racks for the downtown. So, we've kind of talked about a preliminary list. Did, Brian, did we ever measure the west side of the street to see whether there would be clearance? Because you, you thought we needed how much out, let's say, between, on the sidewalk area?
Need five foot for pass ball or moon chair.
Now, does that account for the legroom on the bench, or just the bench, from the front of the bench outward?
I would imagine from the front of the bench outward.
Okay.
That's, we only, we only had, what, four benches for, for downtown?
I think we had six.
Six.
I think we had six, and we only have four now, because we used two on the waterfront. Yeah, we had six benches for the downtown, we have five bike racks, and some of those are for the park, so...
Yeah, there's, there's four benches left down in the, in the building.
Yeah, and then we're going to order these two replacements that we put down on the walkway, so...
One of the, one of the spots was right in front of Old Times, where she had her powerbox.
I'm just concerned about the clearance, because that's one of the buildings that's a little bit closer. I think that would be a great spot, as long as there's enough clearance on the street. So, maybe that's something that we want to go out and order.
The coffee shop was another spot.
Yeah, and we had talked about Sandy's Deli, a lot of the eating places.
Down on the end, yeah.
Um, maybe one up here by the liquor store, or by the building on the corner that's being renovated now.
Well, like you said, we're going to have to pin them down.
Yeah, we need to, we need to get that signed on, because they need to know where to pour the gas, so.
Okay, now your, how about your banners?
We've already approved those, I spoke with, um, some people in the office last week, we're going to get, hopefully, I don't, Brian's been informed of this yet or not, but, we use the bucket truck to get someone some elevation, Scott Bayard, actually, with the police department camera, was going to offer to go out and take some photographs for us, if someone can help him use the bucket truck, and, um, kind of get some elevation and do a number of different shots that we can look at, and then get them screened on the banners. We'd like to wait till a nice bright sunny day, but this may not be the week to do it, so.
For the year.
But Scotty would be happy to do that, so, and they can, they can print out the photographs, so that we can decide which one they like best, and get those screened on the banner. So that's in the works as well.
That's good. You all set?
Well, I can't think of anything else that we have to buy. I think, yeah, I think we're good. I'm good, I'm finished.
Thank you, trustee Penfield, trustee Burts.
Uh, Montgomery Street Traffic Control and Striping, and, uh, and we decided where we're going to put our no parking, uh, signs on in a new area on Montgomery Street. Should we go down and take a look at that? And do those, uh, because, you know, I like what the village has done, uh, especially what, there's more people where benches are, now you've got the handicap accessible parking area, I see cars parked there, some cars parked a little north of that. They haven't been, uh, starting to park on a narrower part of the road there, which is good, except once in a while they'll park, uh, in front of the beach area, so I think we're going to have to, because it's so narrow there, and then if we seed that with grass, we don't want people parking there, so. There's an area there, we're going to have to, uh, restrict the parking, so we'll have to decide, but I think definitely we need to have some no parking signs, and then, where do we want the crosswalks?
I think one of them is just supposed to go down to, right across from the boat launch.
Okay.
At the end, the, and where the sidewalk curves comes out, we're supposed to go across there, right? And the other one should come up, uh, I would think now, somewhere up where Jody Malloy is, in that area.
To get across to the pier.
Well, there's that one sidewalk tile too, in front of, uh.
It's poured during that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be right there, that might be a good idea.
Yeah, right there, we got that poured. That'd be a spot.
So, and you have pictures of, uh, which George Tookin, Carol provided us some copies of, uh,
Uh, no, those pictures, Mike Bingo. You know, we've kicked around, uh, speed bumps, uh, whatever those other things were, and Mike said to me, he said, "Have you seen those signs?" Well, Kelly was there, down in Plasberg, but they're using in Plasberg on Rooker Street, the school. And I said, "No, I had not," so I was, like I said, I was down there the other day, brought my camera, went and took pictures of them, so everybody could see what that looks like. And they're, they're, they're rubber mounted, and if you hit them, they bend over, and they bounce back, and, uh, you can take them up in the wintertime. They're bolted down, so you, you got the pictures, take a look at it, it is. The other thing is, uh, we were talking about is probably having the whole street striked, uh, road striking, you know, the yellow lines, double yellow lines down the center. Right, and then once, and, and parking law, parking striking up on this end.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, maybe the white line, or the yellow line, whatever, I don't know how the, the state does it, but we might have to talk to the county about it, we need to mark the handicap area. Again, might be able to contract with the county to get this all done, they have a, a street painting crew that does that. Uh, every year you get a letter from them, asking you how much, you know, uh, what street do you want striked and stuff. Uh, I will give Al Roscoe a call tomorrow.
Right.
And see, because all of those handicap areas have to be painted blue. And then, in next year's budget, we may want to consider buying our own, um, uh, way of call, but you go, yeah, templates, our own templates for handicap parking. And maybe possibly a bus striking machine, a walk behind.
What does the county charge?
I haven't got a clue, yeah.
Okay.
I haven't got a clue.
That's a good idea, yeah?
Yeah.
I think it's another better.
But we get, you know, for a decent price, and have they come in and do it, it's done in one shot.
Yeah.
Yeah, do it same day?
The, we don't know if they have time to do it right now.
I haven't got a clue, they say I'll call out tomorrow, tomorrow morning. Um, and get, get, you know, get an idea.
Are the, uh, speed tables, are those out of the question?
No, they're not out of the question, I mean, these are all options open to us, I think.
I think something that we should do right away is probably, uh, start out with these crosswalks, see how they work.
These are not, you, you know, they're not only crosswalks, so I think you can put any sign you want there. They got different verbiage on the, on, on the signs.
Okay, well, that's a good.
They actually got them done in, in front of City Hall. I'm just saying, uh, Mike brought this up, I think, oh, we, we probably should sit down with Mike Bingo and, and see what he, he's one who recommended this, and he also recommended about striding.
These two, uh, they seem to work pretty darn good right there at City Hall place.
Yeah.
They smell good.
I was thinking too, it might not even hurt to put some where we can, I know the downtown area is very narrow, but to put some in the crosswalks on Lake Street, it might not hurt.
We'd have to get permission from D O T.
Well, why don't we ask them?
We can ask them.
Yeah.
I mean, there are certain areas in the downtown that are very narrow, but even out here, near Geno's, where you have kids crossing for the ball field all summer, I know we had them during the Fourth of July, but you have kids who are back and forth to Geno's from the, the rec park, all, all center, all summer long, it wouldn't hurt, and to, to, you know.
Again, I'll call, I'll call on D O T.
Because it also might tend to, you know, even if you had one at each end, like in front of the church, it would be another place. If you could, you can slow the traffic down as they're approaching the downtown, to the area where it gets narrow, I don't think we've got room to put them in it, because I think it's too narrow, but I think in the wider areas, why not, you know, just make an inquiry, see whether or not we could?
And the other thing I'd like for the board to consider is a stop sign. As you come into the village, from Route Two, just one stop sign, heading south, in front of the Greg Seagull's house, right on that corner. To get the traffic to slow down at that point.
We had one again, didn't we have one, you were, we had.
We had, we had both sides, but I think you can't really put one on the opposite side of the street going out of the village, or going north, because it's not really in the intersection, you're halfway into, uh.
I can give you the story on that stop sign.
You're running through it, I already know.
No, 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 the, the local police were watching that stop sign, because they were going through it, right? And, uh, the dollies complained that the police were parked out there, and it was bothering their customers.
I have to agree.
And that's, that's the reason why it was removed.
It was happening to John, yes.
And that's the reason why it was removed. And they thought that, you know, their customers weren't drinking, excuse the, I shouldn't say this on TV, but, but they weren't drinking, because the cop's car was parked there.
Somebody did spirits to them.
It's a story, it was in, in Utah.
For other parts.
Yeah.
Other parts, wow, okay, just a thought.
I thought that, that I talked to Mike about this afternoon, I was talking to Mike Bingo about Montgomery Street, because I knew this was on the agenda. And I was asking him, "Don't go off the deep end, George." I was asking him more out of my ignorance than anything, whether or not you can only place a stop sign at an intersection, or can you place a stop sign on an existing road? And here was my idea. You take the sidewalk that enters the boat launch, because in our plan to some.